Public comment, I wanted to spend just a second talking about our young lady who is on the water polo team, won a gold medal, not that's a big deal. We have two, we actually have two. One is currently a student and will return to play water polo games, maybe wearing the medal, who knows? To be very excited. Yeah, don't kill her there, that would be very, very brutal sport. And then her sister, I've known the, Mackenzie, I've known the family since they were little, my daughters been all kinds of teams with them. And it was just a lot of fun to watch them in the pool, sure a lot of us enjoyed that. And I'd like to have Chris come up and see boys, just say a couple of things and you know, just extend brain, just do what you can and we'll say something.
Well, good evening, what a great way to come up and start off a school year, which as everybody in the community knows, so exciting to watch two of our own in the pool at the end of the game and when they, when they realize that they, you know, they just had one gold medal. And I just can't imagine that as a seventeen year old, and Mackenzie's nineteen, but I just can't imagine that as a seventeen year old, the enormity of that. And I don't even know if they can comprehend it. You know, as a wannabe athlete myself at that age, I couldn't even imagine being at that level and to have two sisters at that level affiliated with school is just amazing. And you know, we will be hopefully working with the city and some celebrations. We're definitely working with the water polo and the aquatics boosters and organizations to celebrate appropriately and to weave in celebrations into our assemblies. And of course, on Breaker Day, next Monday, we'll have banners and signs all over the place. And we've already put up some banners over by the pool and we just really want to recognize that. And also want to respect their space, but man, how cool is that, you know? It's just, this is really amazing and great inspiration for the kids in the community, for the athletic programs, for, you know, and students, the student apple, just truly inspiring and rare, I mean.
And don't forget about Lonnie and Grease, because she was there four years before.
I'm just gonna say, this is not the first gold medal.
Don't get me started.
Oh yeah, Wikipedia, I didn't even look at these high schools, it's all Wikipedia, but it is.
Oh yeah.
There's been a series of gold medal winners.
Oh, okay.
You know, and in our gym, you know, and this, you know, I, when people come into our gym, I say, you know, in gyms you see CIF championships, you see league championships and you see runners up and you see that kind of stuff and you look around and then you see on one wall, the Olympic champions, there's gold, there's gold medals, there's volleyball, there's indoor, there's sand volleyball, there's, and there's water polo up there, and there's gonna be another one.
And Dane Blanton was commentating with Beach Light Ball.
Yeah. Yeah. Truly, truly amazing and just great to be a part of.
So Brian Rice, your high school has more gold medals than some countries. I mean, that's pretty cool.
It could be Michael Phelps on the most.
So, you know.
We're looking forward to coming back and honoring them, it'll be exciting.
Yeah, it's great.
Okay, I need to have a motion to adopt the agenda. All favorit. And now it's time for public comment. Mr. Hopping, are you here? I know you're worded.
He's here, buddy.
Where are you?
Rover has hit home.
Yeah, that's okay.
Ninety-five on Friday. Laguna Beach is internationally recognized for its historic legacy and foster visual and performing arts. The city of Bridgeport in Connecticut has been recognized for emphasizing the arts in the curriculum of their district schools, bringing many youngsters who would otherwise fail on school or be in trouble, that has kept them in school. With a collaboration with Van Jan Bickers, the principal, I have been confirmed as the founder and chairmanship of a special pride for the visual performing arts. Right now, it's a, it's a clay replica of scenes in the arts. And ten years ago, I asked the ceramics teacher to consider a vase for the, I was asked by the Air Force and Naval Academies to create a special water polo award for those two federal national agencies. And Spencer Wu, a senior at our high school, created a vase that he works on all summer. And you have the news report there about that. Apparently, the current ceramics director said they aren't skilled enough to do that. But I'm hoping that we'll be able to find some student who can have the skills to do it. An ancient Greek vase, in the tradition of the ancient Greeks, which were the founders of the founding performing and visual arts. And have that centralized to allow a lovely woman to get there. And number two, we now have two thousand students, high schools throughout the United States, that have kindergarten through high school, learn the swim program. I've been begging the school board to do this up at the high school. In fact, a member of the International Swimming Federation, of which I'm a fifth year member, has the swimming pool foundation, which helps to improve the facilities for district schools and everything else. We can extend that pool to Manana and make it a fifty meter pool with the help of that foundation. We should go for that, because I said, so one of the reasons you're saying no is it said it's too small. Well, it's just scheduling, my friends. But anyway, Hopping, who was lost for two weeks during World War Two, survived because he knew how to swim out of the baby. They put me in the water and also I noticed I didn't have toilet paper. Hasta la vista.
Okay, and next I have a card from two ladies, Amy Kramer and Juliette Chesley. I think they're speaking together, but maybe not?
We are.
Okay.
It's a wrap.
Three weeks to them.
We spoke together, see? Good evening Superintendent Gloria and school board members. My name is Amy Kramer and I'm here tonight with Juliette Chesley. We are members of the steering committee for Together Laguna Can Defeat Measure KK. Measure KK will be appearing on the ballot this November. And if passed, it will install not one, but two medical marijuana dispensaries in Laguna Beach as storefront all cash operations. These will be the only two dispensaries in all of the South Orange County. We're not talking about taking away people's pot, and this is not about politics. The major problems with KK are the following. Although the drug dispensaries would not be located near the schools, they could be located near daycare centers, parks, and preschools. The measure does not provide for additional public safety funding for police or parking. And the experience that we've heard in other communities such as Santa Ana, which has a legal dispensary, is that these all cash businesses attract crime and violence. The city of Laguna Beach would not have local control over the persons operating the businesses, nor would the city be able to review their security measures. And Laguna Beach would become the marijuana magnet of South Orange County. Also appearing on the ballot this November will be Proposition 64, which is a legalization of recreational drugs for adults twenty-one and over. And as we all know, brain growth and development between, you know, puberty and age twenty-six is still forming. And pot can very much inhibit, if not delay or discontinue the development of the brain. And we all so know how easy it is to get a, well, maybe we don't all know, but it's pretty easy to get a medical marijuana card and abuse that. So with all of these things said, we must defeat this measure, because it's not only bad for our kids, but it's also bad for Laguna Beach.
Amy, everything well said. We cannot iterate enough how important it is to be in opposition to these dispensaries. This is not, like Amy said, an issue over medical marijuana, or we cannot get distracted by that debate. This is strictly an issue and debate on land use. How do we want Laguna Beach to be used? How do we want our city to be preserved? That is up to us. And we are asking the school board to adopt a resolution to oppose Measure KK. The city council is going to do that on August thirtieth, and we are asking you to follow suit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other people who would like to speak on a topic not on the agenda? Amy?
Yes.
Oh, you're hiding your card, look, great. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, so I'm here, Tammy Skenderian, purely as parent, taking off the other role. I just wanted to address the board and everybody. I wanted to, I guess it's a struggle for me to come up here somewhat on a negative note. But I wanted to have an understanding about the soccer field slash football field slash multipurpose field. And there's parents that have been concerned in the soccer community about the striping of the field and what, you know, the, I guess the end zones in particular. And so I wanted to just kind of understand that process. It's in the spring, I think the understanding was there wouldn't be the colored end zones. And so I'm just curious, you know, I guess how that evolved. And then, you know, it's done and it's beautiful and it's hard, because I'm sitting here all nervous, struggling because I, the job that Jeff Dixon does is phenomenal. And so I don't want to take away from that, but I just want to understand for future processes and stuff, how that stuff happens. And then if it were to be an issue, because what I understand when the girls or boys are, you know, in a challenging play, those lines and the reading of those lines can make a difference in their safety. So that's kind of my question. And if there is something to be done, or we might want to change, you know, that canopy, or, you know, how would we address that?
Okay, so what I'd like to do is ask Dr. Gloria to instruct someone else, say I have to get back to you, because it's not, I don't want to just give you an off the cuff answer, because you may not even know.
Yeah. No, but I'm okay.
So let him, let him work on this, I guarantee you he'll get back to, or someone will, with that information.
Yeah. And I just thought, the only reason I bring it up here is because I thought, I don't know how the board, you know, receives this or how that all happens as well.
So never be, never be afraid to say something negative. You know what, if there's anything out there we want to look at, we'll get it and we'll see what we can do. Okay?
Yeah. Yeah.
And as far as I can see, that's, your comments were negative.
No.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, it's constructive, I'm trying to be constructive.
It was just an inquiry.
Yeah.
Simple fact.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy. Is there anyone else who would like to comment on items not on the agenda? Okay, moving long distance public comment, of course, on the Lupa representative, I don't see one, is there one?
She's here.
She's making.
There she hides, there she is.
I'm not hiding, I gave my chair to the newspaper guy.
Oh.
We are excited about the new leadership that we have. We've met with Dr. Gloria and enjoyed as a Lupa board meeting with him. And he was really open to all, hearing what the teachers had to say, we felt like it was really positive. Looking forward to that relationship in the future, excited to welcome Alicia Odepo. Also, we're excited about the Rocket Ready Program, which Mike Morrison had kind of rolled out, I think at a school board meeting before we all got out of school. But they had more teachers apply than they could even take into the program. And so I think there's a lot of enthusiasm about that. I think one great thing that took place toward the end of the year is when the teachers were able to express the things that they were interested in for our first few days back, the professional development days. There's been a lot of great response to that. And I think the teachers are all coming back really excited to be back and to have the opportunity to work together and to work on these things that have been presented. So I feel like the feel for starting the new school year is a lot of excitement about everything that's gonna be coming out. So, one more week, we're there. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. And then Marty from CSCA?
Yes, good afternoon. Welcome, Dr. Odepo. We're pleased to have you here. And CSCA looks forward to working with you with our staff members. Summer school, we've all talked about, it was fantastic. And I'm sure you'll be hearing more about that as you see what schools started. As I mentioned last time I was here, I went to San Jose and attended the CSCA conference. Very interesting, lots of interesting things happening within our own association. And so therefore, you know, I was dealing with Ms. Winston and some of the things that they come up, because with some resolutions to have affected our district and how we do professional development for some of our staff. On that note, Launchpad really launched today for the first time, because we have, I know I take Lisa's power away, but I'm sorry. And I'm excited. On the professional development, we had our first, two sessions today on customer service offered by Schools First. It was exciting, I attended the first one. But it's a good reminder to all of us that, you know, we don't think we're in that sector of customer service, but we really are. We're service with each other, is how we deal with each other, our students, our parents, and our community. And so really great reminder that we need to all communicate and put on the best that we can. And sometimes things aren't always perfect, but if you start the day out with, you know, positive attitudes, you probably end the day with positive attitudes. Or if there is a little hiccup, you can at least laugh once in a while. So welcome and thank you.
Thank you, Marty. Do we have anyone from PTA tonight?
Oh wow. Okay. All right, let me pull up my digital notes here. I want to welcome you as well. Thank you so much for taking on this role and working with you too. It's a pleasure meeting you earlier in the process, so welcome. I wanted to report on regarding advocacy. There was a Board of, PTA State Board of Managers meeting, and they voted to support Prop 56, cigarette tax to fund healthcare tobacco use prevention, research, and law enforcement of such. And also to support Prop 63, background checks for ammunition purchases and large capacity ammunition magazine ban. That's a mouthful. So I wanted to report that. Also want to report that we'll be doing the mid-years, as we always do at the beginning of our school year, on Wednesday, September twenty-first, I believe, everybody's joining. So we look forward to that at the Hotel Laguna. And lastly, just an appreciation to Mike Morrison, as I think all parents, PTA, everybody, for the online registration of his team. It's been really great, so that's all I have.
Thank you so much. How about School Power? Do we have anybody from School Power tonight? No? Other organizations? Here we go, we'll move on to our board members. Jan.
Well, it's, you were at the ROP meeting, since as the, often you said whenever you were sold that you reported that.
Okay.
But we did have a good meeting and are working well to try to provide opportunities at the high school and talking about possible expansion in the future of some programs. This time I, well, I might move forward, I'm saying this.
Go ahead.
The previous time I had suggested they wanted to do the montage for internships, if they wanted to offer some of the programs that we could do. And this time I thought of the rant, because Mark Christie is an alumni here, but also it could be just business and entrepreneurship, not just the restaurant part. And so that, they're thinking about that for the future. And also mentioned that we might be able to have a forensics class hopefully in the future. I just was basically sharing with Patty that what Michelle Martine is a senate person, the interest level that there is. And they have it at other schools, but I don't know whether we have anyone here that would be interested in teaching it, but it's, it might be possible. So I'm not, I'm not setting those up, I'm just suggesting that, because I know we're trying to get more kids to have classes here. Because it is, even though, I mean, like I think Dana Hills isn't that far away, but I think for students it's like, oh, we gotta walk away there. And they tend not to do that. And then just, I wanted to just say that I, I don't know if other board members have been, had been communicated with about the concerns with the field. But it is, there are concerns and there are issues. And so I just asked that Dr. Gloria, what we're having has to date in the update. So that while, so if there is contact from parents that we, everybody's with what's been decided so far and what their concerns are, what my, you know, possible solutions might be in the future. And then the last is just, we are here to provide education for students in this district. And hearing comments at Memorial for Carl Swartz last weekend, there were so many former, they were former students, they were former colleagues, there were other college professors, and it all came down to that this person was just a teacher's teacher. I mean, that he, there was one that Galvin had had, he was a student. And then she went and applied her job at UCI, was teaching, just finished his last year of genocide in June, just before he turned eight. So he, and she's like, what are you doing here? I mean, she was a, but she said that she had always been a very, very good student and she studied and memorized and memorized. And so after her, she got her first test back and she had a V, it's like, oh. She said, you need to learn to think, you need to take it apart. And so, anyway, just brief comment that it is, it has such a lasting impact that K through twelve, what we do for students, the doors we open for them, and the ways that we help them learn to learn and to use that potential is life changing.
Dee?
Sure. That was great, as far as me segueing in. To, I read an interesting article in the New York Times about conquering the freshman fear of failure. And it also goes along with an article that Keta brought to us. But what I liked about it, talks about only fifty-nine percent of students graduate in six years from college. And how many children, where they're the first person in their family that goes to college, or, you know, minority children, poor children, they get there and they think, it's gotten them a mistake, I don't belong here. And they don't get in as well, they're afraid to ask for help. And so many of them end up not going back. And I was thinking about this, because I've had, I don't know how many there are, but I've had three different parents approaching this year, whose kids didn't make it through their freshman year of college last year. So, what, this has an easy, easy help that's really cheap. What they did, they did this large scale experiment on university life. And they didn't, they don't tell us what school they used. But they reached out and they did two things. They had all the freshmen read from upperclassmen what their experiences were, how they were maybe afraid when they came to, and how they made friends, how they reached out. So they kind of got that part. And the other part was the Stanford psychologist Carol Dweck's work on closed mindset versus, you know, fixed versus an open mind, open growth mindset. And just having kids spend forty-five minutes online, learning about that, made this huge difference. So it's practically free, I mean, everyone has a computer, do these two little things. And the reports were like, out of five hundred and eighty-four students, forty-one percent who went through the exercise remained in college full time, compared to thirty-two percent of the students who didn't take it. And there was, there's, you know, there's more about it, it all passes on. But I, I thought it might be valuable to have all of our, it also helps kids in, in high school and they said, once they're in, out of college, with their jobs, just knowing kind of, you know, whatever your IQ is, you're not stuck with that, that doesn't mean you can't ever go on and do something else. So for it, something that is kind of research based, doesn't cost many and could help a lot of people.
Thank you, Lizzy. Great. Welcome.
Well, I would like to welcome Dr. Odepo. And mostly I've been practicing that name rather than.
It's taken you a while.
So that's like, oh, Jason Justin, couldn't even get that right. I would like, thank you for going to ROP for me, appreciate that, I was working on a wedding. I would also like to thank Jason for the revamped updates. Love the streamlining, thank you. My tennis pants, only this way, so really appreciate that. Got a tour, Jay took me on a tour through the Thurston Library, a couple, day yesterday or the day before, and wow. It's what an amazing space, it's incredible. So, thank you to School Power, thanks Mike, thanks everybody, Jeff, everybody who put that together. It's gonna be pretty incredible, so. And then lastly, I did go to the Google conference, just the keynote speakers. Man, it was incredible. The first guy, he was funny and I liked him, but the second day, oh my gosh. It was Jeff Heil is his name, Googled him, see if you can find something online. It was, for me, it was, I mean, I'm old and it was almost life changing. Listening to him speak and how he related, opening, you know, what, what teachers do, what we do, and open mindset, you know, exploring possibilities, nurture room for wonder. Just that alone, just that alone, if you think about that. I mean, that's pretty incredible. And so I just, I just would, if you guys have any opportunity, Jeff H E I L is his last name. And if he has anything online, just listen, even for five minutes, I tell you, it was great. So Mike, thank you and your team, and whoever else was instrumental in putting that on. Obviously, I didn't stay for any of the techie parts, but just the rest was, I mean, just those two, just those two mornings were incredible for me. So thanks, appreciate that.
Were they recorded, by chance? Were they recorded?
No, they weren't.
They were.
I would have, but I don't know how to do that myself, besides if I die. Anyway.
Well, I unfortunately missed that conference. I so wanted to go, but it was the only week that worked for my husband to go to Tahoe, so it was good. I'll check it out. And then the online registration as a parent, parent app, simple, wonderful, easy. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Welcome. And I won't even try to pronounce your last name for quite a while, because it'll be painful for all of us. But welcome and your lovely family and our family. And Jen, you made a comment about like how life changing is for all students, or any. There are things like in the last week of all kinds of conversations that come with students and with Jason and stuff about how the, how education shapes them, is life changing. But it also made me think of how, we need to make sure we have access. Really, we need to make sure that access for students to take everything.
More hours in the day, more days.
Well, you know, like if you're able to take an honors class or if you're able to take a, what is some class without having done something before. Kind of like, I think in the interviews even where Jason was talking about how you could have those different access points. But it made me think of that, when you said that, just anyways. And then what was the growth mindset, what was it that was online that you could do? What was the, I'm getting it horrible?
Carol, Carol Dweck.
Carol Dweck has a forty-five minute.
Well, she, what about fixed mindset, yeah, and then she has an activity that follows with that as well. And I'll, I can share that, I'll get it.
We should, we should.
Yeah, I'll share on the beach.
And I also love the greatness, but are those updates online though? Because.
Yeah, just click here for the links.
Can we, can we get back on, on, on?
We'll do both. We'll do both, and we'll give the links to the URL.
Okay, awesome. Awesome, and that is all.
Well, I was actually very happy when I ended up going to the ROP. I don't get, I was teasing, no, before I said, when I'm here, I said, I told the views all personally, I'm a part of it, because these guys just don't miss anything, you know? So, just a brief explanation, since it's public, we, of course, are aboard mine, and two of us, Jan and Keta, are also sitting on the capistrata of ROP. And they handle almost everything and report back to us on a regular basis. When I got to sit through a presentation by Patty Roma, who's the district director, I guess, over there at the ROP. And after that meeting, I just blew away, and I said to Jan, maybe would you have to come down and do a presentation for our board at the next meeting? Because there were so many things there that I didn't know. And I'm always amazed what I don't know. You know, I keep thinking that I've been around long enough now to know quite a bit of things. But then I, someone starts speaking and I realize, well, I don't know this area. If you, like I am, don't really have a firm grip on the integration between ROP and CTE, career technical education, and the integration between CTE and high school, and the difference between articulated grades and new enrollment, I needed things I really, honestly, I didn't really fully understand. I may have, maybe heard some of this before, but I didn't really understand. And one of the things that I think everybody has seen with the ROP, which is now CTE, is that these career pathways that they're creating are leading to some of the best paying jobs that are out there for kids. In fact, a lot of you have probably seen the studies that show, that in many cases, you're better off getting a community college education that leads to a job, a training position, than you are getting a VA. And there's pretty good data. I'm not saying don't get a VA, because, you know, a lot of us still think, you know, one of them getting that VA is very important. But I couldn't believe the pay scale, which I sent around to, if you guys got chance, you may not notice it. The amount of money the jobs are paying that they're getting these kids, and this is a real thing. I mean, at the end of the thing, they're getting jobs. And, you know, the low end thirty to fifty thousand, the high end over a hundred thousand a year. And I don't know that many college graduates unless you're, I don't know where you'd have to go to get that kind of money. Usually they don't get a hundred a year, in any job, you know what I'm saying? So, there are so many jobs out there. So there are so many jobs out there that the CTE pathways can help you attain that are good paying jobs, that are really existing jobs at the market that are needed, you know. And a lot of these poor kids, they go, well, I, I ran into this young lady who, and I was in Normal, she was a waitress. And then she had gone to Scripps College and she got a BA in European Studies. Now, I don't know if you know much about Scripps College, but it's extremely hard to get into and extremely expensive to go through. So I started thinking to myself, you know, it's, it's a waste, she was a obviously brilliant young lady. She had this degree and now she's here and she's been doing it a while. What's it like? Was it summer job, you know? So the CTE pathways, now I guess there's a state program being developed to accredit, not to accredit, but to measure high school performance on this. It's not developed fully yet. I didn't know this. You guys all, I didn't know this, okay. So this is something I've learned. And it's in process and we're part of the discussion. I didn't know this. And that it directly affects the inter- the interchange or the relationship between the community college and high school. Such that in a lot of places now, you're seeing high schools teaching community college classes in classrooms by the high school teachers. And in some districts, you're seeing a joint high school slash uh community college, like Santa Ana, where at the end of the deal, they have an A degree and a high school diploma. I'm not saying we have to do this, I'm just saying there's so many things I didn't fully appreciate about this and didn't understand the technicalities of. One of the things I was very excited about that they were doing was internship programs. Now, I know that we have here some work, special ed kids I know have worked in local community things. What I didn't realize is they're doing things like biochemical, medical, pharmaceutical. Again, so and you say, well, that's ROP, CTE. No, 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 this is for the A through G kids who want to go to the big colleges. Because those big colleges love to see those internships. So this is an exciting thing for the future for us to look at. Obviously, a little jealousy, you know, Capistrato is doing it, we're not doing it yet, that's all new, so you know, nobody.
But just Lynn Gregory has been charged with, with, with working that angle.
Getting that going, yeah. So I mean, anyway, I might never come down.
Also, Karen, those pathways are available for students, but they have to go with the word of the law.
Right, but there's some, there's some issues that you need to know, there's some, there's some politics involved in it, there's questions, I mean, I don't know what I'm going to do now, let her do it. So I'm just saying, I think it was an exciting presentation, I think you should see it, I thought every board member should know that because uh honestly, um I think to do this board, you really have to understand a little bit about that board. So and that was just exciting. So Keta, thank you for uh.
I was glad.
Whatever that was that caused at the end. All right, that's enough of it. How about the superintendent?
So I would like um to welcome Alicia, if you felt, Dr. Ebo, to look at a picture of her.
Oh, I forgot, I'm so sorry.
And uh actually, I'd like to take this opportunity, I know her, her kids are around and, and in and out and in and out, they're probably outside now.
They're using the facility.
They're using the facility, so we'll, we'll catch up in a second. When they come out, we'll, we'll catch up with it and have Alicia introduce her family and the people that are here to support her. But in the meantime, um Alicia really stood out uh in the interview process and having the last seven days, actually, to work with her. I've realized that uh she shares a lot of the same um ideas around education that I share. And that uh has made it a really good um start for us as a group, as a team as well. She's definitely an educator first and um a teacher at heart and I, I started teaching um back in nineteen ninety eight. And she has a special education, multiple subject credential. And um has had a lot of experiences that I think are going to be useful um in the district in terms of literacy development and in support for our teachers. And I've already sensed that as well. She has been running around, going to school site to school site, meeting with the TOSs, meeting with the principals. Um I think Donna is gonna have another one on her hands that she's gonna be working the schedule, just like Arlene who's um out and about and doing a lot of things. And, and that is um, that's exactly what we're looking for, someone who I know is going to be out there working with our staff, working with our, our teachers and our classified staff and all the support that, that we need to support our students. And um one thing that I know she'll mention um at some point is just her work outside of and what she's passionate about outside, besides her family and the work that she does with her husband. Who is also a fellow educator as well. And um again, just so excited to have her on board. And when, when the kids come out, I'd, I'd like to take the opportunity to have her introduce her family to, to us.
Yes.
That'd be great, uh because as we all know, that's what we get home to at night. It's uh part of the reason we do this job, so we can go home to one of our neighbors at night at night, so when they come, we'll pop that out, that's it. But um I wanted to briefly uh just report, it's been busy. The school sites have opened for business in terms of just kids coming in and registering and families doing online registration and new, new people coming in. I know that we've had a lot of uh new enrollment up at the middle school, um Jenny and I were talking about that recently. All good things, um all really good things. And we are wrapping up a lot of our projects and uh that's always a fingers crossed. But appreciate Jeff and Dean and their work, really has been one to um get our schools out and running. And I think uh like Keta mentioned, the uh the media centered library up at um at Thurston, I took a picture and tweeted it out when it was just, there was nothing in it. So I'm looking forward to going back and taking that same photo to see the difference, so. While we're, because I know they're probably gonna wanna go, so can I always take a quick second? And introduce, Alicia, do you want to introduce us here?
Um so this is my husband, Ben Odiwo. World's best husband. He should get a, a medal, but um he manages three girls. Uh this uh this is Sydney Odiwo. Sydney, would you like to introduce yourself? Sydney, my name is Sydney. Alright, please, uh, so that Claire, would you like to introduce yourself?
My, my name is Claire.
There you go, good job. And um we're joined by my parents, Marge Hobbs and Tom Hobbs. Marge um was up at top of the world um from nineteen ninety, nineteen ninety three. So I finished um my senior year in high school with mom as principal, so. So um I'm just, I feel really lucky to have my train spot here tonight.
We're glad they could come, so that's what happens.
So cabinet members, Alicia, do you have anything further?
Uh I am, I've been so pleased uh that I was selected, but I, I have met with a lot of people. We have an extraordinary team in Ed Service, in Downing Instructional Services, so I'm so pleased that we get to work together for our students. So thank you for the opportunity to be here.
You're welcome. As I joked with Jason, we do have an incredible group of people, the best we've ever had. So my joke again was don't screw it up. Okay, how about Dean, just to rest?
Uh no, I think you're gonna watch strong grade, we're really excited about uh wrapping up, but just um, she's better strong.
Lisa?
Just briefly, um welcome Alicia, I'm glad that you're here. And it was, it has been busy. This week we really felt like we're back at, you know, full capacity, even though the teachers aren't back yet. We have new employee, employee orientation this week, substitute orientation this week. Just a whirlwind every single day until school opens, so we're excited, it feels good, positive energy, so I'm looking forward to it. And Margaret already mentioned our, um, that's okay, that's how it works. Our first step in our launch pad, uh training modules for classified staff. And we had two sessions of uh customer service training today. And it was, the parts that I said were exceptional and I think our staff will really appreciate that.
We don't normally ask our principals, David, wants to say anything about the beginning of school? You don't have to. No? No?
As though.
Well, that's it, I had a reporter call me, say, Bill, what did you think of starting this school? Jenny, you want to say something? Do you think, anybody?
Do I want to say something?
Yeah, I'm, I'm asking.
About our PBIS award that Thurston received?
You can say that.
I saw that.
Okay, it's not quite a gold medal, personally. Alright, so anybody else? So yeah, I had a reporter ask me, Bill, what's, we're going to start a school, like looking for, I guess, problems. Don't think there are any problems. Nobody's told me that there are, so. Very good. Okay, so let's move on with that. We have the consent council, we're gonna have a motion to approve. Okay, uh any public comment on the consent council? And we are taking this, we are changing our format, taking the public comments first. Uh any board discussion or anything you want to pull on that? Which item, please? I don't know what's left, what left, H.
They're not pulling it off.
They're not pulling, okay. Anyone else? H or Q for question, anything else?
I don't see it, hearing none, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I'll start with Q because I did ask Jason about this firm, some people just share with the rest of you, what.
So we're just adding another firm to um to our, basically our uh ability to access uh different lawyers in a broader frame. So right now, we're traditionally using um AA LRR as well as Lieutenant Tucker for special education. Fagan, Freeman, and Full Frost um are primarily an education firm. And they do, that's why they were built and um they are representing about three hundred to four hundred districts and community colleges throughout the state of California. And um all we were doing is trying to add to um that from lack of that term stable uh people. Uh I know, I believe that um they had actually um interviewed, been interviewed by the board previously for board policy work. So uh that's something they're known for as well, as well as uh board protocol workshops and um special education and so on and so forth. So again, I just like having the opportunity to have an additional attorney um as needed. Uh we find our attorneys are always very busy, so it was uh good to have another guest as needed.
Can you book a new protocol, correct?
I have booked them in Florida.
Thank you. And then on the warrants, I just, I had asked that question, which actually I didn't publicly answer this. On the, all this state board utilization, I wasn't familiar with that, so I asked and it was, I was wanting to answer, you answered this.
I can answer, I, I got a check cleared by Dean. They say board utilization, so when we um, if we have purchased items um that aren't, we don't pay sales tax on because we may have purchased something in the state that doesn't charge sales tax or required to remit sales tax on that item to the state. And as well as food service, so when we sell um food in our um to students, we're also required to send sales taxes to the state. So that's our regular sales tax.
Can I just say unbelievable on that?
Because I said, so we're, we're rejected from that until we have to pay.
So.
Is that not it?
We gotta pay it, yeah.
Well, fair.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Is it? Okay, again, I have, well, I already have a motion, all in favor? Moving on to number nine, Dr. Lawrence is gonna do a presentation or talk about the protocol of governance workshop discussion.
So at the last board meeting, uh there was um a request just to follow up um by uh Barbara and Morgan did uh related to a board policy workshop. So I brought it back at this meeting as an agenda item. It's traditionally something that the board has done over the last many years um at varying stages. I think the most recently was a kind of a partial, a partial, sorry, um policy with Dr. Farley more recently. But again, I think it's a great opportunity now um that I'm new, I have an opportunity to work with the board on some protocol about how this, that we can work together as a team and how my staff will convert to support the board and, and provide them information so that everyone can make the best decisions possible. So uh with that, uh my hope is to get some direction from the board as to what they would like to see in this area specifically and, and we can bring back a recommendation at a future board meeting for um what you want to do, what you'd like to do.
And um and I would, with consensus, like your request that, that they get back with us and provide direction for who to use for facilitator and when, sometimes October, October.
They who, who's gonna get back to the staff?
The staff, the staff, well, who to use, like whether a lawyer, whether, you know, like a, whatever, you know, executive search firm, whatever that might be, I don't know. Whatever that.
There's different firms that do it. So just, you know, CSBA does, there's people in CSBA, there's different, uh law firms that also run board protocol workshops. There's um former superintendents that do a board workshop and protocol. So what I, um it would be helpful if the board would be able to give me consensus on this is what we would like. If it's, so that I don't bring back um uh possible folks who the board is not interested. I'd rather make them know that now so that I can move forward and make a decision.
And I'm, I'm, I'm intimidated of this because I'll say my bit, what I've said over the years. Man, I, and what I've witnessed so far, the capability is right there. And so I don't think you need a whole lot of assistance. I think when we're in this district, this is the team. And so, you know, we need to figure out how we will work best together, knowing that we have certain things that you adhere to. And actually, I was looking through this today and some of this is even off base. You know, I, I think we get these things, then we stick them in here and that, and we need to refine some of these because they're not either what we're doing or they're not actually definitive enough. So, you know, I, I think it needs to come more from within, I've always felt that way. My experience has been we have someone come in from outside, it's more often that they're telling you what work where they work. And it may not work here, I, I guess I would tend more toward a legal opinion, that's, that's why not, but I'm not CSBA.
That's, well, I think, no, I, I think I totally a hundred percent agree with you because I agree with your, when, if somebody's, well, when I was superintendent, blah. We all do that, because when I was a mom, you know, and so I think that's, so I completely agree with.
It's about language and, um, and I wrote attorney on here and I just tried to open it to others because I didn't want to be just my opinion of it to be attorney. But I think when you get to, I sent Jason this photo of this equality and quality, it shows these three kids who can't see over a fence, right? And so it's defining the word quality. So one person defining it gave them, and they're three different heights, gave them the same size box. So well, then one could see over the fence well, one could just barely and the other one still can't see over the fence, but that's a quality, they have the same size box. Someone else in equality gave them three different sized boxes that allowed all three of them to be able to see over the fence equally because the box is larger. Right, so it's kind of like defining, and trees are amazing, and just defining what that is. So we might all say the word quality.
True, you're just gonna say it, surprise.
We don't, we don't.
I can agree with that.
Yeah, like Canary over there.
How bad doctors.
Doctors, some people are very good at it, they make a living doing that, that's why I should say, they think, helping people define what they mean in language, right? So I think that would be helpful so that we're all understanding what a quality or whatever the word is, what it means, right? And I think that that's important in breaking down their costs.
I, I just made the one comment I could, which is however you want to structure it, I think it is good every now and then to have this discussion of protocol and governance. Because no matter, hold on, I'm about to board, I still struggle with some of these concepts of what is the board member's role and what is the staff role? What is the superintendent's role? And in a small district, it is very easy to push by the limits of one role versus the other role. Because you're so passionately involved and we know so much. Some of us know too much, you know, that's a problem. And when we know too much and we see too much and we hear too much or we're around, um, you know, every now and then need to put the brakes on me, not so much the other guys, but.
I think though, too, the timing is good because we have so many new people and it's just a good, it's a, it's an opportune moment to, to do this. And I respect that, I, I understand where Jan's coming from because I, I do, I do believe you have all the skills. But I also understand that sometimes it helps to have that, that completely dispassionate, you know, person or I in there to help, to help it just, everybody really come to where they need to be. And so I, I respect that.
So I don't want to put you on that hot seat either, I mean, I know, I understand that. But that it's, you, you organize it. And then you bring in the people that you feel will support that, but.
Because you, we are his boss at once, we're his boss. And you can't ask your boss to help you govern yourself. We have to govern ourselves. He puts them in a, in a hot seat to give order. It's, it's interesting and, and his job is to manage it, our job is to lead him and give him the leadership and then his job is to manage and then in turn, give the leadership to everyone else. And so it's, it's hard to put anyone in that position to say, you need to come up and, and help this. It's, it's easier with a facilitator and I think it's a lot easier with a lawyer and I'm probably biased, but yeah, so.
Let me not put a doctor there, let me just.
I would, I would really be in favor, I mean, I'm, I'm probably the lowest one on the total poll here and it would really, it would really help me. And um would it, would it be open, open to the public?
Yes.
I think it might be good to maybe ask people who are running.
It'd be like the first one that we did when we started that December, it'd be. And actually, uh we didn't do that much in February because there was a desire to do it and I, and I felt that we should wait until we had a superintendent so we would be doing it over a year. So and I think that, that we don't need to do it, we can do it in pieces. However, I mean, I'm suggesting that, that, but, but.
Right.
You know, of course, I'm like.
Well, so what I can do is um find some potential dates for it as well. And I think the general consensus that I'm hearing is that um an attorney would be the best. And so I can bring that back and have a discussion about that if, if need be, or if it's just the firm we. Um and so I can bring that back and have a discussion about that if it'd be more of if we just prefer me to find one that gets more recommended. I could do that as well.
A lot of what we have to deal with does deal with things that are legal.
Mm-hmm.
So.
It's a part that makes us all makes us all nervous. It makes us nervous, right? From what our role is and so it I think that's another comfort.
That's all. I'll build a advocate though because I can see some advantage. I always have to be contrary to you, but I I can I'm true basically.
Contrary.
Did I say something else? Okay.
No, I'm just emphasizing that.
Well, yeah, because that's my nature and I'm true. I think it's tough for a new superintendent to come in and establish roles a hundred percent, especially with a very seasoned board and say, I've got to be tough on you guys. And here's how I'm gonna be tough. When you get a lot of them telling you, I want him to do that. I told him this directly. I want him to do this. Big shot me, uh easy for me to say he's gonna be tough on you guys, you know. You know, my job is not voted by five people. But you know what I'm saying a little bit? Sometimes I feel that the expert ex superintendent might be helpful. I'm just throwing it out as if only because they can offer something because somebody in the board says, well, here's what I like to do with it.
Yeah, I've had that with when we had that recently and it was always my district, my district, my district. It just. It just don't.
I got that for you.
It's just not, I do I don't find it as, yeah, I I see what you're saying, but I think he's he's smart.
Good. I think it's gonna be okay. Well, yeah, and.
Yeah, but there's some smart board members here too.
But. But it's not the superintendent. It's not it's not the superintendent's job to manage us. It's our job to manage us.
She's tired. Yeah.
We're the superintendent's boss. It's not like.
Well, suppose we don't manage ourselves.
Well, we just that's what that's about. That's how we try a way to manage because.
Yeah, that's what that's about. We know. Then then we can tell each other.
Right, because we're supposed to do it. That's what we're supposed to do.
Not what I'm doing. Alright.
We're supposed to manage each other and then leave.
Alright, just just throw it out. We've drawn her up.
So.
I know you're on drugs.
No, I'm not. So I, okay, then the question is, do we want me to bring him back at another board meeting so that we can uh adopt an actual person you'd like to use or have a couple of them come out or would you just prefer that we move forward?
I'm comfortable with you doing it.
I'm comfortable, yes.
Exactly. Alright, I will I will handle that.
The administration.
Okay, public comment? Always with information. Well, they get comments, don't they?
Oh, yes, I'm there.
There's nobody commenting anyway, so that's fine. Number ten, action item, approval of the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen unaudited actual report. Uh motion to approve? This is Dean West. Public comment? Why did it first? Okay, public comment? None? Mr. West.
Okay, this is going on the actual report. You know, we have about a two year cycle. We have about six months in budget development. We we adopt the budget on July first. Um we hit, we revise the budget, you know, at a first interim, second interim, which happened in December and and March. And then so and then we close our year June thirtieth and we have until September fifteenth to do our unaudited actual. So um that's what the report will bring you tonight. And then by December fifteenth, we have our auditor report. We're going to have the auditors come in, look at that, look at the records and then report and distribute auditor report, which then goes on to the county and the state as well. So uh this is our look at how the year closed in fifteen sixteen. Uh and I'll walk you through the report. So there the agenda page ninety uh is the certification page and uh ninety one is some of the statistics. And I have those up on the screen. Uh uh just uh letting a few figures that are compliance in nature. Uh what are your appropriations limits? Uh do uh the the percentage of classroom expenditure? Did you read your M O E, which is your tax rate for administration type stuff? Um we will be the next following getting out and doing the gamut. Sometimes that number is zero, sometimes it is a positive number. Uh and when it is a positive number, we can send a letter to the state and alls that does is calculation uh relating to state appropriations and our district specific. And I'll go into that next item. But this kind of summarizes what goes to the state in the S A C S uh form, which is the official form of the data collection for all uh school districts and government agencies. So um the page ninety two uh is the uh kind of a reconciliation. So the last time on that wheel chart there that we talked with you was second interim. Actually, we adopted the sixteen seventeen budget and along with the sixteen seventeen budget, there was an estimated actual. And so we always reconcile from second interim. The second interim, a lot of times you use that vague. So if there's a uh the first adjustment you'll see on page ninety two is the the adjustment we made at that time to make a clearer estimated actual depending on where the budget was. And a lot of times we do that as we're doing the sixteen seventeen to prepare the fifteen sixteen of where it's gonna roll into. But the budget at second interim and estimated actions has a lot of appropriations available budget to spend. But a lot of those budgets tend not necessarily to be spent and that that those dollars are carryover a lot of times to other programs. Uh could be to do a first C L E, could be a school power project, could be just just uh school site allocations. So we broke it into three different types of things that change the ending balance uh or the 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 net change of balance. So we have an ending fund balance, which is the cash you actually have in the general fund. And then you have a change in fund balance and that change in in fund balance is just difference between the revenues and expenditures. How much did you change? If you're spending now on one-time project dollars or carryover, it you're maybe overspending that annual allocation. But um on our baseline dollars, we're always positive. So we receive uh higher restricted ending fund balance, which means we we have more carryover in in a restricted program. We reduce contributions. That's a positive ending fund balance because we had to less give less to a program which might be uh maintenance or or special ed or whatever the restricted program needs a contribution. Higher unrestricted revenues, we got property taxes came in higher at the end of the year. We have donations, which is other local income, which came in higher. A lot of times it since uh March fifteenth is the last time we're doing a second reporting, all those donations we we do as received. And so anything like funded need for R O S, I think it's kind of going into higher levels. Down below is those bu- budgets that are left over over or being carried over in in some kind of fashion. Uh and so there's site based ones and then there's departments. Um the music gift program or the uh former categorical programs of war or life. Uh we we do still hold some kind of accounts for like instructional materials, like textbook type funding or staff development. And so some of those are rolling over and have dollars available immediately for next year that you're not even using the next year's appropriation check. You're still using carryover dollars. And then the force C L E, which is projects ongoing. A lot of these come during the summer time. So we actually have a three hundred and thirty nine thousand dollar positive increase to the general fund balance. So uh on the slide behind you, you can kind of see that um we had the the change in fund balance in one column and the effect on the ending balance. So um we'll end the year about seven point five million dollars in the general fund. So on page ninety three, you can kind of see how the general fund reported. So um the sections, revenues are in section A. Uh if you go over, there's at the top, there's unrestricted, restricted and combined for the uh actuals. That the total fund for that is column C. Uh if you look at revenues, we have about fifty fifty six million dollars in revenues that we received this year. Uh if you go down in expenditures, you you spent about fifty five point three million dollars in expenditures before considering transfers. And then so the transfers effect is uh and then you can turn over to page ninety four. And that's where you see it started the uh this year with a seven point one eight two million dollar uh fund balance in the general fund. And you ended with seven point five million dollar fund balance in the general fund. Uh that's made up of about five million dollars in unrestricted, about two point five million dollars restricted funds. Okay? And then the um carryover that's going back into school programs is about nine hundred thousand dollars. Um and then there's about a million dollars that we can put inside in potential one-time items. Sometimes that's uh textbooks, sometimes it's special ed costs, sometimes it's capital projects and other types of things that we we can use that on. You can also use that over transfer to a special reserve, those kind of things. Uh but we are holding uh five percent in the economic uncertainties according to to Ed Code and we're holding uh uh in the restricted balance at two point five million. Uh a a good portion of that is the four percent we hold for the chain restricted maintenance. Okay? Uh so if you page ninety five, uh it kind of shows that ending fund balance of the seven point five million, how that detail is making up. The other is the S A C form. This is kind of more written out a little bit, a cleaner, uh a little bigger font and print. But we put this in every uh first interim, second interim, where we always monitor what that ending balance is and what's the makeup of that. So you can see in the restricted categorical programs that the routine restricted main the four percent makes up about two point three million of that two point five million dollar restricted. And the the kind of so um the in September is when we 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 decide whether or not you're wanting to kind of maybe make a contribution either to basic aid fund or to one of the other special funds. Uh we we do have uh uh you know, projects we looked at in the restricted facility funds, the basic aid differential fund. Uh it's kind of accumulated the funds. Um so this is an option, but there's several different reasons why district's always reserves. Uh we did put a um report out, I think in January of last year, the L A O came out, we're looking at the caps. And so there still is the uh S D seven ninety nine, which is a a cap that they're looking for legislatively, looking at that, whether there's a cap on unrestricted funds. But one of the reports in the January report said district reserves uh are there's several reasons. It's one to manage cash flow. And you notice each year we do move six million dollars into the general fund just for cash flow purposes. So you don't get property taxes in time. Uh mitigate volatility in funding. That's what our potential one-time reserve line is for. Address unexpected costs, special ed costs, settlements and stuff like that that come up. Uh save for large purchases. That's more the facilities capital approval programs and to obtain higher credit lines. So that's a strong district. So all five of those reasons, we kind of use all five of those reasons that we do when we do a review of that. But that came from the the legislative analyst office in the two thousand fifteen report on fund balance. And that's what they were used to kind of decide with the S P seven ninety nine terms might be. Okay? I just want to point out to that because that that one point one million is more added expression of how we handle that and 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 coming year. And you may not want to take any action in September, wait till you do um or you or you may. So we're people we can talk about that later. But this is where it ends in the end of the balance. Okay? Uh then we have um the Form A, which is our tenants, just shows uh pretty pretty level uh attendance because it's in many different time periods which we take that P two and annuals to the end of the year. Normally, district P two is the biggest or the most number that we they focus on more most. Uh so you have two thousand eight hundred ninety eight students in seats on average. And then uh at the bottom of the two thousand nine hundred nineteen fold, when you include county programs, because it might be just a few county programs. Okay? Um page ninety seven is is the fifty five percent requirement for restricted. That's an extract from the data that we have in our general ledgers. And then for pages ninety eight through the end of the report, it's on the slide here. But that those show the revenue as expenditures for financial funds, whether it be the adult ed, the food service fund, the basic aid differential, special reserve for non-capital outlay, the fund twenty five for developer fees, that building fund or the fund forty funds, which is the F R, the Aliso reserve and the capital approval program. So on the slide, you can see the balances there. Obviously, our major funds is the fund seventeen for the basic aid differential. Um we're no longer under that two oh two thirds requirement just in that fund. Um if we were to be under that requirement, it'd be about one million dollars or more in that fund. Uh but in the fund forties, uh we've reached to define that language to be that those reserves is counted well towards a hundred percent differential. So and then we're well well over that. Uh but those those also are funds that we're spending capital project money on. So if you look at the facilities repair and replacement program, it's about six million dollars. We have nine hundred thousand dollar contribution to that in sixteen seventeen. So that, you know, if you realize we have a six point four million dollar, you know, uh contract related to air conditioning, incidentally lighting, that kind of pretty much makes up that F R. Um Aliso property reserve, we're in sixteen seventeen, we're drawing five hundred thousand dollars to keep them.
So that hasn't been done yet.
No, that's sixteen seventeen. So this this is uh before that. And then the capital improvement program, uh four point seven million dollars. Now, that has to do with cash flow. So a lot of that money might have been budgeted in fifteen sixteen but didn't occur because of some of projects like the field. Uh all that field work, a lot of it happened in July rather than happening in June. So what happens is that money carries over into this ending balances and then is used in July and August and that number will be uh down for the exposed projects. Um and so these are the cash flow with projects in there that will um significantly uh uh be a lot lower at the end of this next year because of those major contracts.
But we're still on par to borrow borrow from ourselves.
Right, so you still have the sixteen million in the fund seventeen to borrow from the general fund for cash flow.
And then we flush. And then replenish that as we say that.
There is two million, two point one million dollars scheduled each year to go into those funds to replenish that money, tho- those uh ten-year kind of programs. And so the only thing we need to monitor is the cash flow thing. Uh you don't do too many problems that would delete those or deplete those.
Thank you so much, Dan.
One more question.
Sure.
That's a little idiot.
Um so the carryover for this each site, is that just is that just gonna build up over time or what? What do I know they get a lot of different house.
There's 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 several pieces in there and the distribution of it. I I'll go back to the we have a little uh schedule on it. But some of it's force C L E stuff. So there might be a force C L E reserve, but then there's also the school power force C L E, which meant was usually attributable to the school site budget.
That's right.
And then they um the school power also had um expert funds that came in for eight thousand dollars for this, the the uh.
Whatever.
The score award, yes, yeah, and that kind of things. Also the P T A held over a fifteen thousand dollars at a more for the the.
Class structure.
They we did, we they ended up switching at the last minute to to the makers basis furniture. So we what we did is we took fifteen thousand from the school site and carried over to cover prior commitment we thought was there for the shade structure.
I was just I was just wondering.
Yeah, so there are there are there there are there's a combination. It's not all unrestricted allocations. Um and so.
Thank you. So Dean, on page um one oh six at the bottom, then at this point, you're suggesting transferring two point one in the next year?
We already had that scheduled, that adoption.
Right, so that and that is for is that for all the funds together?
Uh so yeah, yes. So. So in in uh page one oh eight, are you on one oh eight?
On one oh six.
One oh six. Yes, okay, so on page one oh six, from the state standpoint, you have a fund forty. And from a county ledger standpoint, you have three funds, forty, forty-one and forty-two. So yes, this is the the sixteen point five that was last, one point six five that was last year, two point one million, which is scheduled for this year. And then the five hundred thousand going out is the Aliso reserve coming back to the general fund to keep the balance at the uh hut of loan rates. Okay, and so on the next pages, if you look through one oh seven, but you look at one oh eight, one oh nine, that is actually one we appear there because it combines the F R, the Aliso property and the capital program to show the combined balances. So you kind of see where those are um with each specific fund. So.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh with that, I need to have my own paper.
Hi.
Hi.
Moving to number eleven, approval of resolution number sixteen dash twelve. Increase two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen G A N limit by two million one hundred ninety four thousand three hundred and twenty-three dollars and adoption of the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen and two thousand fifteen, two thousand seventeen district appropriations subject to the G A N limits. Now, a motion to approve?
Second.
And public comment? Again, Dean, it's going back to you, I guess.
This is why uh state pro- appropriations are limited uh under proposition. And so what this does is that every district that has um unused appropriations goes into a state by pool. And any district that might go over that appropriation or has a a higher growth rate like us with a strong tax, property tax reference being A, sometimes we're we're throwing the stronger rate. What we do is we draw from that appropriations at the state level by sending them a letter and saying we need to increase our appropriations. That's what this G A N limit does this year. Sometimes we don't need to ask for that, sometimes we do. And so what it is is saying, okay, we're taking some of the statewide appropriations and giving it uh into the appropriations in the middle beach. Um and so you 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 either have A or B option, but everybody's in compliance with the G A N.
So let's go ahead. All in favor?
I see.
Moving on to number twelve. Authorize the assistant superintendent of business services to file a notice of completion, N O C, for the redwood columns restoration project at the Luna Beach High School by worldwide construction or reporting by the county clerk and coroner. Motion to approve?
Second.
Public discussion. Dean, we're back to you.
Uh this is the uh info restoration of the redwoods. I think you'll see that. This is the info restoration of the redwoods, that then you'll see that we have the back to school recreators up there. It really looks really good. And so this is completion of that work, that was on that now. There, this was within the, the budget we had set aside in the master plan to do this project. There was a couple of options that came out that we didn't do. We could work in September to see whether or not we wanted the caps on there, which look like with a metal or with a copper caps, which will help maybe the wood limit the deterioration, let's see if you can down that too. But we didn't have that in the plan, so when that, they threw those options out to, they said, maybe we'll look at it for a, a future. But this is completing the project that is.
So would it be possible with that?
It's possible.
Okay.
We'll, we'll, we can bring back to you that in October.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to number thirteen, award of extra services contract for mechanical consulting services for Thurston Middle School gas line replacement to Hocop Design Solutions Inc. In amount not to exceed two thousand one hundred dollars, motion to approve? Second. Public comment? Mr. Murray Dixon, I think this goes to you. Is he here, there he is.
Well, he's here, I got, I got.
Mr. West, okay, so this is a little shock.
Yeah. Basically, inform me on this, basically, the piping for the gas line, no, we shut off the gas line at Gersten related to that. So they've been working on that, they've gotten all that out and tested the, the, the services, the design work to place where that meter is placed, it's placed at the back of the school versus where it was going to be at the front of the school. That changes the design and piping and everything like that, that's kind of what this contract is for, is just the placement of the new gas meter.
Dean, just because somebody asked me, can you just give me a re discussion of the scope of that project? How many gas lines were there to replace, were they all replaced?
The whole infrastructure was sort of placed, you have to tell me if I'm wrong, you're going to have to come up here and talk about that.
I just had someone ask me this, you know, I wanted to be able to respond correctly, I didn't know the answer, so.
Yeah. It was, it was.
Yeah, it is actually a very good question. The modernization work done back in two thousand four used a lot of the new plastic pipe that's used in the gas lines. It's a hundred year pipe, it'll last forever. There was still a lot of old metal pipe in the center of the campus. That is where most of the leaks occurred, so we're able to reuse a lot of the existing pipe that was done in the modernization. But we use the metal pipe acting as a sleeve for new plastic pipe to connect with it. So we're able to use quite a bit of the existing pipe, especially along the perimeter of the campus, but the interior is basically all the pipe.
Alright, any further board discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, moving on to fourteen, that was fast. Got a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next regular meeting of the board of education is Tuesday, November thirteen, two thousand sixteen, six P M, at our dislocation.